All right, we'll call this a minute and two order. Uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have a corner?
We do have a corner, Mr. Board, you get it.
Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening to this, uh, very important special meeting that we've called to try and react to, uh, new state funding as quickly as we can. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda, so, um, our board members, you have an agenda in front of you with a second page of addendums. I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve the agenda.
Sumoed.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On both, same sign. Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is a community comment time. Community comment time is a time for any member of the community to come forward and, and share their thoughts and concerns with the board. There is a three-minute limit per speaker and a fifteen-minute limit, uh, per topic. I think, uh, if we consider the, uh, budget itself as one topic, we'll maybe waive the fifteen-minute rule if there's enough people who want to speak on that. So, uh, uh, the only rule is that we ask that you be respectful to all parties at all times, that no individuals, uh, uh, become attacked during any discussions, so. With that then, uh, any members of the community who would like to come forward at this time and, uh, address the board you are... Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy is waving her hands because I'm supposed to remind you that there's a signup sheet, uh, um, up here, uh, within the minutes, or a minute taker need, would like to, uh, write down who it is who's, who's speaking, so if you would, uh, please, uh, sign in when you come up and, uh, state your name, uh, when you begin to speak, uh, that would be appreciated. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Pam Kearns, a sophomore in the concert choir at the high school. Let me just begin by saying that I've been in choir since kindergarten, and I went to private school from kindergarten to fourth grade. And then my parents enrolled me at Jefferson Elementary in fifth grade. And I was really nervous for my first day at the public school because I wasn't used to bigger classes and meeting new people. And I was scared of being the new girl, but then I found myself to be in choir class. And as a new kid, I found that expressing myself through music really helped me meet new people and be myself. And I was in choir all throughout, um, fifth grade through middle school, and I'm still in choir now. And I found that I have a strong passion for singing, and singing in choir would make me feel like part of something new, like a family away from home. And every time we'd learn new lyrics to a new song or sing karaoke in class, I would find myself smiling like crazy. And now here I am, five years later, and I can honestly say that music has made a huge difference in my life. I've grown up quite a lot since I was that scared of the creator, and music has helped me through my rough patches. Music has a great impact on all of our lives. I mean, how boring would a car ride be without jamming out to your favorite song? I speak on behalf of all of the musicians in our district, whether vocal or instrumental, when I say this: we need our music, and we need to sing and play our parts out, because that's what we were born to do. Without music, we, as Ferb kids, would not be able to experience the Big Nine Music Festival in eight, eighty-one-year tradition of musicians coming together and sharing the gift of music, which is also the biggest music festival and longest-running one in the country. In choir, we also get to experience new languages. Throughout this year, we've sang German, French, and many other languages. Music is a way of expressing cultures, and we've learned a lot about different cultures. But most importantly, the teachers have the greatest impact of all. This year, we were lucky enough to have a new teacher, and he teaches us with great energy and a huge smile on his face. He has impacted my life and the lives of others. And he's like our father of our choir. What I'm trying to say is, music isn't just something extra for some of us; it's our lives, our passion, our expression, and our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Hannah Marie Geist, a sophomore in high school, going to be a junior. When I was very young, I started out with a dream, like most kids, but mine was to be a musician. It's always what I've wanted to do, it's what I want to do with my future, and I've done it always in my past. And I feel as, like, when we lose something this wonderful, that it does affect the people around them. It's, it creates a family. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name's Anna Bestel. I'm currently a senior at the high school, and I'm a member of the concert choir. I wanted to speak to you guys today about the fine arts, because it has made a huge impact on my life. I have been lucky enough to be able to be involved in music, theater, and all the sports all through my education at Ferbo. Through the mix that the concert choir has of ages, I have been able to make friends with kids that are younger than me, and I learned something when I was really young: leave things in a better state than what you found them. And I feel that it'd be a shame for me to leave, to go to college in my new horizon and leave my friends back where they can't have the same music education that I was able to have. I was just hope, hope that we are able to have money and educate these kids the way I was able to be educated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Fieldbar, and I'm a current, um, senior at the Ferbo High School. And I was just gonna talk about some of the activities I've been involved in at the high school. Um, I've been involved in basketball and basketball for four years, and link crew, peer tutoring, NHS, Big Brothers Big Sisters, science team, Rotary Stride Program, and finally choir. My plans for the future, I'm gonna be attending Augustana College, where I will be majoring in chemistry and biology to hopefully go on a pre-med track, and then I will also be in choir at Augustana. And I just wanted to talk about how the activities I've been in, in high school have affected me throughout, throughout the years and how they're gonna affect my future. Um, I've been involved in many activities just to stay busy and to get different perspectives on the high school experience, uh, the high school experience, so that it can improve my life later on, and, um, choir has been a big part of that. I've learned a lot from choir, I've learned a lot about music, and it's helped me relax throughout the days, because I've taken a lot of very hard classes. And it's a way to kind of relax and just learn new things and a new perspective on learning and teaching. And I feel like a lot of people that are in music have the higher grade point averages and are very dedicated students and in many activities. And this, this past fall at Augustana, I did a scholarship audition, and I will be going on Augustana, I'll have $2,000 scholarship each year to go to Augustana to sing for choir. And I don't think I'd have that much confidence to go there and sing in front of a panel like this and, um, just learn that much about music and how it can affect me later on in life. So I'd like to thank you for your time and just to offer my perspective on the situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Morgan Melton. Uh, I'm a Ferbo High School graduate, class of 2011, and currently enrolled at Luther College, sophomore this year. Uh, I was involved in the music program, uh, Ferbo, all the way up from elementary school, whether it was maybe not directly through the school, I did Missoula Children's Theater, starting in kindergarten, all the way up through grade eight, orchestra, starting in fourth and fifth, band, sixth through senior year, choir, seventh through senior year, theater all the way through. And I gotta say, when I first started, I didn't quite know what I was doing, it was just something my mom brought me to, and I was just like, you know, this is fun, I'm good at it, so, it was something I did. What I didn't realize is where it would bring me. I'm, as I said, I'm currently enrolled in Luther College, I'm singing in one of the top choirs in the nation. I have received a scholarship equalling $14,000 throughout my four years there, along with private music lessons with one of the top opera singers in the country. I had no idea that this is where music would take, take me. And I'm not even one of the good music kids at Luther. Uh, my major is elementary education, and so obviously I have a great interest invested in the future of my sister, who's currently a freshman at Ferbo High School, and a lot, every other student who will be attending there and is attending there now. I just really hope we can save this music program, uh, all of it, I realize, not all of it will be cut with, uh, if this budget cut happens, but every single part of it is important. Just music as a whole just can bring joy, hope, and just a sense of belonging to a lot of kids, it can give them an outlet that they may not have realized was an outlet for them. So just please consider, uh, keep it into high consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Elaine Kerriger, and I'm a senior this year. I've been involved in the choir program for six years, and it has always been one of my favorite and most memorable classes, not only because of my love for singing, but because of the directors who we connect with and who create an enthusiastic environment for us each and every day. Uh, music is made up of so many components. There's passion and history, there's hope and love, trials and victories, and you really get to understand all this through the variety of songs that we sing. As a choir, students get to be one voice, we get to work together in unity and become stronger and more confident in character, and reach out to other people through song and understanding. When I move away from my hometown of Ferbo, I want to leave it in a better state than I found it. I want incoming students to have as many opportunities as I've had growing up, and I don't want to lose any of our great teachers in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers this evening?
Hi, hi, my name's Chad Wolf, I've been here once or twice before. Um, as much as I would like to address the school board, I'd really like to, uh, address the young students here behind me also. I can't thank you guys enough for coming and, uh, showing your support for the music program, and, uh, you graduated from here before, um, and what the school meant to you and whatnot. And, um, obviously, this group up here faces some very difficult decisions, and unfortunately, money has a heck of a lot to do with it. And how do we bring everything back? How do we keep things? How do we continue to grow and, and prosper as a school and as a community? And, um, so, it's really great that you guys are here tonight, and I would really ask you, um, that this fall, when some form of a levy might come up, um, whether it's for music, whether it's for middle school and high school activities, whether it's for transportation, whether it's for technology, um, it all affects the school, it all affects your friends and your fellow students, and I would implore you to, uh, to get involved and help make our school look better place and continue to progress forward, so. With that said, uh, once again, thank you for coming. And, uh, school board, I, I, I wish you good luck on your endeavors tonight and whatever you decide to do, so, thank you.
My name is Carrie Tuma, and I am a parent of three young boys getting older every day in the district. One will be going into ninth grade, one will be going into sixth grade at the middle school, and one will be still in third grade. I come before you, I was at a little bit of the work session yesterday, and, um, I agree with Chad, unfortunately, it all comes down to money, which is unfortunate, because we don't have enough. And a long time ago, um, someone very smart said, "None of the cuts that we're looking at are good cuts." And so therefore, based on that premise, not being able to add back all of the cuts or the add-backs leaves us in a situation of having to choose, and that's based on revenue. I come before you, I applaud all of you, I agree absolutely that, um, to stay involved and to stay focused on, on your desires is, is very, very important. Last night, one of the main topics at the work session was kind of a debate between, um, adding back or adding to the curriculum technology versus, um, middle school, high school activities. And while I was also in all of those activities as a young individual, and they helped shape me into what I believe a fairly well-rounded individual, um, I look at them as extracurricular activities. I want them, I want them for my children, I want them for all of these students, I think that they, um, help to create a well-rounded human being and student. But when looking at having to make those difficult choices, we can't have it all if we don't have enough money. So then we need to look at, I believe, the academic institution, the school district, first and foremost, as an academic institution. And I see technology coming under that umbrella, under that piece of it. I think it's, you know, I was thinking about that thing, and I think it's so important to look at who, who benefits from all of these things. And when looking at technology, I see that as something that affects all of our students, that will bring all of our students to a current and, um, capable place at graduation, so that they can go out into their post-secondary choices, institutions, experiences, having that technology base and being ready for that next step. And although extracurricular activities lend themselves to so much in the way of leadership and development and peer relations and relations with teachers and coaches, those things can be found through other avenues, those things can be attained by parent involvement through things like our growing community ed department, like Park and Rec, like so many associations that are already stepping up to help out in those situations. But as a parent, when faced with two charges, do I want to try to educate my child in some way in the technological world, or do I want to find them a soccer team to be on? I know as a parent which one would be easier for me. And when we are looking at the demographics of our community at present, I think that to bring all children up to speed in that academic realm, in that technology realm, is so vitally important. I think everyone was in agreement last night that our district is not current, it is not, um, to the level of some other districts in technology. And when faced with that choice, I think it's imperative that we, we try to make the decisions based on what all students need and what decisions will affect or benefit all students, not just, um, a minority. Even though, please make no mistake, I believe all of these programs are vitally important to our district, and I want them all back eventually. Unfortunately, it's a matter of revenue. So, perhaps that's on the community's ownership, that we need to decide what our vision for our district is and to do what we need to do to get that done, but at present, I, I really believe curriculum is of utmost importance for all students. Thank you for your time, best of luck.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nicole Lewis. I also am a parent of three kids, a third grader, a sixth grader, and an eighth grader going into high school next year. I actually wanna commend these and thank these kids for coming, I think it shows, it takes a lot of courage to come here and speak in front of the board and people watching at home, but I hope it puts, for those watching at home and for you, the board, puts some perspective on us as voters, that we vote on these decisions, you make your decisions, we vote whether to increase funding or not. It ultimately affects them, they are the stakeholders. It's, they go to school every day and have to live through what we choose. They have no say in the vote, unfortunately, well, some maybe do, some seniors, but I think as adults, we have to remember that. I also was at the work session last night, and I agree with Carrie, I think, fortunately, the state came through with a lot of money. Unfortunately, we don't get to see it until the next two years, and it's broken down, but thank heavens they came through. However, there's still a lot of cuts that we unfortunately still cannot afford, we are short revenue. And when the topic came up last night regarding the technology levy for middle school, high school extracurricular activities, I have to say, I agree with Carrie, that I have to go with the technology piece when you're picking the two, I think number one, it will affect all students, or it will support all students. And number two, our kids, our kids live technology, um, it's their way of communicating, it's their life now, it's, it's a much different world that we, that we grew up with, it's, um, you know, kids, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but kids, they get on an Xbox Live and they're communicating that way, or they use iPads. Nobody goes to an encyclopedia anymore in a library till they've got something, the first thing they do is go Google it. And I think if we can provide them with technology access to those students, that some students already have iPads, some are using these, they have the tools, so if we can just support them a little bit more, and teachers that have iPads, and students that have iPads can start using them in classrooms to enhance their education, I think it's, we need to lay that foundation for them to allow them to do so. I think Terry Romaine, principal at Roosevelt, brought up a very good point last night at the work session, and he talked about Roosevelt was fortunate enough to get some iPads in their school. Well, if they're, now, they need to know how to use them, they need to know how to work them, they need the wireless internet to be able to access things. And I've, I've been in classrooms, especially in the special ed department, where I have seen a non-verbal autistic child who now carries an iPad around her shoulder and can communicate with teachers, with other children, and have the access and capabilities of doing that. And without that iPad, she had no form of communication, being non-verbal. So I just, I do, I think it's a, it's a hard decision to make. I come from a, I was married into a, a football family, who, two brother-in-laws that are coaches and a husband that coaches, and it's hard for me to say that I would take technology over middle school sports and high school activities, however, I just, I really do firmly believe that the technology piece would benefit all students and not just a small group that participates in sports. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, my name's Katie Hennessy. I am the mother of a seventh and eleventh grader in the district, and I would like to offer a differing perspective perhaps on this technology discussion. Um, I'm very in favor of supporting a huge technology expansion in this district, but I gotta be honest with you and tell you that last night, what I heard sounded just a little vague, and I don't feel like I understand exactly where that hundred thousand dollars is going. I, I guess I would rather see you move forward with a very large, um, integrated plan where we know exactly how we're gonna expand, similar to what you talked about with the literary coaches. What I look at is the after-school activities, we have a chance to make an immediate impact on many, many students, and they are very, very important. I understand it's extracurricular, but you can't participate in those unless you have excellent grades. So it is an incentive for some children to keep their grades up and to behave in school and to attend school, so they can participate in those, in those activities. So I guess I'm, I'm throwing that out there, saying I would, I would say as a parent, I'm interested in pursuing that piece this year, and a very large technology piece the year after. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Hello, um, I'm Connie Anderson. I am parent of a freshman at the high school. I am also a parent of two previous Ferb high school graduates, and I graduated there myself. And, um, I am here tonight because I would like you to consider the middle school sports activ, activities and the high school activities as something you would bring back. I understand the cuts that we are facing are pretty devastating, and they're all very important, but the kids do need something for after-school and something organized, and I don't know that we have programs in place to replace them at this point, but from, from a kids keeping involved and, as Katie mentioned, you know, the attendance and grades, it gives them incentives if they want to participate in different extras, extracurricular activities, and there are many things I think that they learn in those atmospheres, that it's not in a classroom necessarily, but they're still learning things that they're going to take with them. And they're learning time management and all kinds of things. Um, and a lot of those coaches and people heading up those extracurricular activities, they're, a lot of them are teachers, if I'm not mistaken. So they're still, you know, have educators in front of them as role models, and they're learning leadership skills and those things, things that they're gonna need to take with them out in the job forces when they get out of college or when they're in college. So not to, I'm not, I'm new to the information of hearing about this technology, I don't remember seeing something on it previous, so it's not that, I, I personally have visited a couple other school districts in the area, and I do feel, I, I see that we're, technology, they're much further ahead than what we are, which I would like to see us get there, but I would like to see us focus on what we've got currently, keeping it there, and then figuring out what the plan is to move forward in those other areas, instead of jumping in and leaving behind things we had, like the extracurricular activities at the middle school and high school. So, thank you.
Hi, my name's Tara Van Tomy. I'm a current sophomore at the Ferbo High School. I've been involved in many activities, I'm in swimming, link crew, band, choir, and those have been really good outlets for me, because if I'm not having a good time, like at my house, or I'm just going through a rough thing, I can go in there and just like sing a song or play a song and just forget everything, and it's great. And like, if I, I have math written for choir, and I'm really not good at math, and so after like a rough math test, we go to choir and we'll sing like a happy song, and we'll just like lift my spirits, and it's great. And I know what people are saying about the curriculum that we need to do that, but I think it's the students' choice that they want to learn, if they don't want to learn, just people throwing things at them to make them learn won't help them, they'll just resist. And if, and the technology, I don't think will affect it, because we, we have the technology, like, we can, like, I have a cousin who's like four, she can play with an iPad, and she can do whatever she wants, like, better than her mom, and she owns the iPad. But it's the staff that affects our technology. They teach us, like, I've had some great math teachers when I've been struggling, because I'm not good at math, and they've helped me, and like, I don't see how technology could help me there, and, like, calculators are great, but they do the same thing, and, but they just teach you the way computers can't, and it's great. And thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Miranda, I am also a current sophomore. I would like to talk to the, about the same, uh, topic. I believe that technology is- I believe that technology isn't really a, like thing that we should base on right now. 'Cause technology will always grow and we might not catch up with it still. So we could start it when it's like still fresh, I guess. But extracurriculars are very important. Like last year, I wasn't doing good in school. I didn't care much about homework and I was in theater. There was a problem there 'cause I could not pass. So I actually tried so hard and I actually made it and that made me feel really good 'cause I could stay in the thing I love. 'Cause I've been, I've moved most of my life, so I can't, I couldn't be in theater. I've auditioned, but then I moved. But those kinda things kept me happy 'cause there's something that stays there. They're always constant. And there's something that people actually really care about, like I'm sh- ah. Extracurriculars are very important because they give someone something to do, something to get them pumped, something to get them ready, something that they care about. And technology, like Tara says, everyone has it. They all know what to do, all these kids. They take out their iPad and they know exactly what to do. I would give up my iPad just to be, have more extracurriculars and have them still stay. We need to, uh, think of the things that we have and like help that and keep it. Thank you.
Any other comments? This is usually the point where I remind people that I'm a college professor, so I can sit in front of a quiet room for a while. Any comments, so, um, we'll give whatever time we need to see if anybody's working up the courage to come forward.
My name is Daniel Ross. I have a daughter named Iris, which is gonna be at the, is at the, the freshman at the high school will be in 10th grade this fall. I'm speaking for every student in this classroom, this room here, I'm sorry. Um, I don't care what school you go to, if you're elementary, high school, you know, middle school, whatever it is. These extracurricular things that I went through as a kid thirty years ago is still the same today. You know, these kids have no, have no say so what they're gonna do for our votes. I'm a taxpayer, we all are. But you know, you gotta stop and think that if I keep extracurricular stuff going here, first technology, it's a building block. It goes from kindergarten, elementary, high school, you know, middle school to high school and all, all of a sudden you're on college here. Eighty-five percent of these kids that go on to school for extracurricular activities, they don't place up here because their grade level is like C or D, it's A and B. And they have their honor roll and they get scholarships. So a proud parent says, you know, my, my, my daughter, my son, I'm really proud because they got this scholarship. They got that brass ring, that title belt on their waist as a wrestling. You know, and that makes them feel good. Because if you don't have those extracurriculars activities, what happens? They go to shoplifting, they go to Walmart and mistake some of the things they're supposed to have. They lose their focus. And their focus is this, you keep it in there. Some way, somehow, people have to like knock off and say, okay, we're gonna support this. Like the slogan says, I got it Ferbowl. Let's put Ferbowl at the top of the, or any other state in this, in a state. Okay? That's our slogan. I'm getting Ferbowl here. All these students here get it from Ferbowl here. They go on to Mankato, they go on to New, any state in the United States that they go to. And they come back and say, you know, I got it Ferbowl because I got extracurriculars in my school and I'm proud of them from Ferbowl. I, my son, I'm proud from Ferbowl here. You know, Ferbowl has it here. We have the ball. All we have to do is sit there and throw it out in the field. Guys, our witness will be there, you know, and we will be there. And I believe in all you students over here, all you parents, every single one of you, we have to do this for them. Not us, for them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to come forward? All right, seeing no one, uh, that'll be the end of community comments. I wanna thank everyone who came forward. Um, I appreciate very much your thoughts and opinions on where this district is and where it should be going. I know this, I speak on behalf of the entire board and we thank you for coming this evening and sharing those with us. Uh, and I hope that, uh, we take your thoughts into account as we have our discussions this evening. Okay, um, on with the agenda then. Um, before we get to the, the budget piece, we have one quick item and that is the soccer complex, uh, light quote. Um, and I'll give you a little, uh, background on this. Uh, the, uh, I forget what the name of it, the soccer maintenance committee, um, met, uh, just a few weeks ago. Um, and, uh, they have for quite some time been trying to get money raised to put lights up in the soccer complex. Um, and, uh, have succeeded in raising enough money that combined with, uh, money that had been left over from the building of the complex, uh, they can pay for lighting, uh, in the soccer complex. So, uh, this is not something we're being asked to spend money on. This is something we're asked to be fiscal host for, uh, based upon a donation from the soccer association, uh, to, uh, pay for these, these lights. Um, and then they will be installed, um, uh, at the soccer complex, uh, just north of, uh, the middle school. Um, so that's the situation. The reason why I put it on the agenda tonight instead of waiting till the next meeting is 'cause if we wait until the next meeting, they might not be able to get them in for the fall, uh, soccer season. So, uh, um, so, uh, they asked and I thought it seemed reasonable, uh, if we could handle this item, uh, this evening, uh, to give them an extra four weeks to get things in this summer. So that is the situation. You have the quotes in front of you. Uh, Kevin, I don't know if you have anything you wanna add to, to what I've just said. The plan is to go with the, the lower of the two quotes that you're looking at. Um, uh, and they will be, uh, giving the district a check and no work will begin until they give the district a check for, for that full amount.
Very well put.
All right. Any questions or comments on this item?
Is this for ball field, the main field?
Yep.
The fans?
Yes. Yep. There are no questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve the, the quote.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve the quote. Uh, I'll just read this off from Ardent Lighting Group LLC in the amount of fifty-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Uh, funds for this project are being donated from the soccer associations. That is what we're voting on. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second.
Have you worked with this company?
No, I have not.
But you've checked them out.
Background checks seem well.
Okay, thank you.
At our meeting, we had a lot of discussion about the, the pros and cons of Musco versus Ardent. And, and I think they, the, um, uh, those in attendance had long histories talking to people who have used both and felt comfortable with the lower corp. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much for, for handling that. I know the soccer association and, and our high school sports, soccer team will appreciate that greatly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, now on, uh, to the, the major business for this evening. Uh, considering, uh, some budget adjustments, uh, before we get started on that, I think I'll say just a couple of words. And Todd, if you want to add on to this to, to bring everyone up to speed about the process, uh, that we've been going through and, and where we are in that process, uh, this evening. Uh, almost a year ago now, uh, as the board was bringing a levy question to the community, um, this board approved a, a list of cuts that we felt were needed in order to make, ensure that the budget was, uh, balanced for the, for future of three years. Um, at that time, the assumption was that, uh, the state was not going to provide new revenue over the course of, of those three years. Um, that assumption came out of, uh, um, ten years' worth of experience in which we've gotten very little, uh, or no increase from the state over, over many years. Um, however, uh, um, it, uh, with the new election, it came, uh, uh, new, um, ideas of the state. Um, and in fact, we got quite a bit of a revenue increase, uh, from the state. Uh, not enough, I think, to put back everything, uh, that was on that original cut list. Um, uh, which is unfortunate, but, but, but enough to, um, reduce the number of cuts, I think, fairly dramatically. And so, uh, uh, we got final word on what those revenue sources were just a little over a week ago. Um, our finance director and her office has been scrambling for that past week to collect that financial information and get it to the board. Last night, the board met to, to look at that financial, uh, information and try to get a sense of what there is financially, uh, for putting things back. Uh, um, or taking things off of the cut list is maybe the best way to put it. Um, and so we are here this evening to, uh, finalize that discussion and to take action on a number of those items, uh, to reduce that, that cut list. So that's where we are, uh, this evening responding to, uh, the new revenue that is coming to us, uh, um, from the state. So I wanted to set some context. Todd, I don't know if you wanna add anything to that context before we begin a discussion?
Just, um, to emphasize that this is, we have a really short window because the legislative session just ended. And I went to my meeting last Thursday, the twenty-ninth of May. We got some numbers that were preliminary and then I was able to give them to Colleen. And then, uh, Colleen actually, uh, finished the numbers Tuesday. So it's been a lot of, there's certainly been a lot of planning before this too, to talk about priorities with the add-on committee and, and the leadership and some other staff members that we have in the district about these different areas. Um, I just wanna let people know that I'm very pleased of how, how the legislative session went. It is, you're right, it's not enough, but, but after ten years of limited or no funding, it's really hard to catch up right away in one or two years. I just wanna emphasize too, that these add-backs that the boards are, board members are about to vote on are all positive. So regardless of how we come out of this meeting, I, I hope people look at this in a, a very positive light. We will have to still address the issues that we have unresolved somehow in the future, obviously. But for now, I, I just hope that when, when people leave, they, they all feel good about the decisions that the board's going to make for, for this year, next year.
All right. Um, so with that, uh, based upon our discussion last night, we have broken tonight's discussion into a number of sections. Uh, the first section, uh, is item A, uh, which relates to the, the number of staff, um, being added back. Um, and so you can see the list there. Uh, roughly three teachers, uh, back to the elementary schools, four, uh, back to the middle schools, uh, three back to the high schools and one and a half, uh, going back into orchestra and music. Um, based upon our discussion last night, I did not have a sense of significant concerns about these items. So, uh, perhaps we can begin with a motion on this item and then open it up for discussion. Uh, so if there is a motion at this time to approve these, uh, we can go ahead and do so?
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
So I have a motion in a second to approve the list of, uh, budget reduction adjustments as, as listed, uh, in front of you. Um.
And specifically five A.
Five A is what we're talking about. Five A. Um, so discussion, uh, on that item from the board.
Mr. Chair, um, of A, that one, two, and three, now that's adding back the TOSA.
Mm-hmm.
Special assignment.
That's correct.
Which reading wasn't cut, was it?
No, I think.
You were, were adding actually beyond the add-backs, right?
Um, I might have to have Nicole explain that again from last night, if you don't mind.
Sure.
To, that, those are some finances that we have that have been, we've been using, but we're just reallocating them somewhere else. So, yeah, I don't, is that right, Mr. Chair, to have Nicole come on?
Please, you know, and I'll add what my understanding is, and Nicole, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But my understanding is essentially what we're doing is reallocating this, these assignments into a new position. So we would have to approve the new position and that would be part of this, is my understanding. Even though, as you say, the things that they're doing are not new, it's being reallocated into a new position. That would be my understanding.
And also, how many positions were cut? I mean, this is adding, how many positions were, teaching positions were cut?
Twenty-six point six FTE cut.
Right, so we're adding that, what we had in front of us.
Nicole, the, I don't know if you wanna add to what I said.
So your explanation is correct. We, we currently are using substitute teachers in this, um, in this position every, every day, all year long. So basically, rather than having substitutes come in every day in these, in doing these duties, we're creating one position so we can have some consistency.
Um, I would add as, as well, um, to, to highlight, uh, for, for those who haven't been following this as closely, um, where we are not adding back teachers, um, the ones, 'cause we're not adding back all that, that were on the original cut list. The, the bulk of that is at the elementary level where we are, are, are reducing our staff by nine, uh, teachers from this year till next year. Um, uh, I, I want everyone to understand that, uh, as, as much as I'm glad that we can add back pieces, we are here. Uh, that is a consequence of this. Elementary is, is always been sort of a tough nut to crack. Uh, it's very difficult to piecemeal, reduce, uh, elementary one or two teachers at a time because they're very interconnected, um, and class size has changed so dramatically. Because of that, in past years, elementary has really been protected from cuts. Uh, while the middle school and high school have received the bulk of the cuts in recent years, at least since my time on the board and the time I saw before that. Um, uh, and the reverse part of that is now that there's been a cut at the elementary, it's very difficult without a, a very large chunk of money, uh, that we did not receive enough for to, to put that all back in, in one chunk. So, a partial explanation of, of where things are not being put back.
Is, is it cheaper to go this way than the subs?
Um, it is not, no. The substitute, or this, this person that will be in the position will be paid based on their individual step in lane. And a substitute is paid, um, a flat rate of a hundred and ten dollars per day plus their benefits and, um, taxes and so forth.
I'm just wondering why it's at, you know, I explained last night of, you know, I thought the meeting was, you know, bring back the, uh, the cuts. I wonder if this should be brought back or next month as a regular budget meeting? I mean, it's.
The way I see it is we trusted the administration and the boardings to recommend how they saw the staff, the best way to add staff with the limited resources we have. So I, I mean, that's why I would see we need to proceed forward and trust their recommendations and make a decision tonight so we don't, so we can make some, go forward with the labor issues.
These pieces are all interconnected, so it's very difficult to piecemeal, take one or two teachers out. That's why last night we tried to bring up those questions if they were there last night. So it's very difficult to do this one at a time.
Question, licensure is not an issue for short-term subs, is that right? This person isn't licensed for every subject he or she may be teaching in a substitute basis. So we can hire a substitute for short-term and not have to consider the license?
Right, yes.
But if it were long-term, then we would have to post it for an appropriate licensed person?
That's right. If they're in a position that's fifteen days or more, then they have to hold the specific license for that curricular area.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? There's a joke over here about a college professor under the breath, but it's.
He's just gonna say it. He's just gonna see if the college professor was awake.
He was waiting to see for comments. Mr. Robershaw, Dr. Robershaw, sorry. Doctor Robichaud, sorry. Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call on this item?
Okay, Mr. Casper?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Malathura?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud votes aye. And Mr. Engelbreit?
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.
All right, thank you all very much. Next on the agenda is to consider transportation, item five B. This was an item amount in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. The effect of adding back transportation would be to reduce the transportation distance from a two-mile radius to a one-mile radius. Currently in our district, we have a one-mile radius and we had planned to go to a two-mile radius next year to save money. And this would restore it back to a one-mile radius for next year. Discussion on this item? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I mentioned last night that this was not part of the ad hoc committee priority list. Somehow, it snuck back in, and I'm concerned about that.
What?
Yeah, that's, you know, a hundred thousand that should be taken for middle school athletics or, you know, whatever. I have a concern with this, since it really wasn't really talked about really seriously at the ad hoc committee.
I think, I want to respond to that just to say that at no time did the board bind itself to the recommendations of the ad hoc committee, nor should we bind ourselves. Second of all, I think the amounts that we're looking at were larger than the ad hoc committee. So, there's a number of things being put back that the ad hoc committee wouldn't have been able to propose. And so, and third of all, I would like to make sure that transportation was not talked about to the last minute. We also got a list from the administration with their suggestions for transportation to consider in line, I think, with equal weight to the ad hoc committee. And transportation was near the top of their list. So, I want to make sure that we have all of those pieces in mind as well.
And I'd like to comment that I found the discussion of this item at our last meeting, and it has been a part of the discussion for over a year when we considered making the original cut and moving the distance to two miles. And I found the discussion last night particularly compelling in the areas of safety, judging by the intersections and the, some of the transportation obstacles that students would be forced to deal with. Another compelling argument for me was the impact, or possible impact, perhaps probable impact, on student achievement. When we make a getting to school more difficult than it has been, it's going to perhaps affect the ability of some students, some families, to get their students to school as regularly as they need to be. And we can't possibly succeed in our student achievement goals if our students are not with us. And to me, that was a very compelling argument for restoring the one-mile radius.
I'd just like to reiterate what I said last night. I've had parents get ahold of me saying that transportation is not top of their list. There are other issues that they're more willing to have than going from a one-mile to a two-mile radius. They feel that parents will get their kids to school, that it won't be as big of an issue as what we're saying. And I see the one-mile radius in front of my house just as bad as a two-mile radius, kids not getting to school on time. That's a personal perspective.
I would just add that since I've been, or before I was elected to the board, the transportation issue was a priority for me. So, I appreciate the administration recommending it, but my experience with people in the community is they will not be able to access rides or ways to school, and they will struggle to get to school, especially people that work low-income jobs with hours that start before school starts. Or they're, they're gonna have older children mocking younger children who distances in cold weather, and I think it's just, it is an issue in our town.
Any further discussion? If not, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call on this item? Do we, I'm sorry, do we have a motion and a second? We need to get a motion and a second, thank you.
Mr. Casp, I'm sorry.
Please do a roll call, Mr. Clerk, thank you.
Mr. Casper?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
No.
Ms. Malathura?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
No.
I vote yes, Mr. Engelbreit?
Yes.
Motion passes. Oops. Um, quarter to two.
Quarter to two, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next on the agenda was the topic of the most discussion last night and a topic of many comments this evening from the audience, and that was technology. This was on the list of recommendations from the administration. A number of board members expressed concern about whether or not that should be the next thing on the priority list, and so, we had a long discussion about that. And so, I want to mention at this time, actually, item five D was the next thing that we talked about in the most detail. Item five D contains high school activities and middle school activities and Riverbend Nature Center, all things that were mentioned last night as things that might be higher priorities to some board members rather than the technology piece. So, we put them on here on the agenda in that order. And I'm not sure in which direction we want to go this evening in terms of which of those we want to approve. I think we are looking for an amount around a hundred and ten thousand dollars if we were going to approve something. And so, there would have to be trade-offs between those things based upon our discussions last night to keep that budget, I should say, if we want to keep the budget balanced at the end of two years based upon our projections. So, with that, I'll open the floor to discussion, and I'm happy to have the discussion include both items C and D, or bring in other items should anybody have them.
Mr. Chair, I would like to move that we table these two items so we can have some further discussion. We had the discussion last night, and as you indicated, it was probably the bulk of our discussion focused in on those two areas. We heard some very articulate rationale for both activities and technology. I for one am not prepared at this time to vote on these two items without further information. And I'll share, for example, when it comes to Riverbend Nature Center, I would really like to know what are the learning outcomes that are going to be lost in our elementary schools by not having that relationship with Riverbend Nature Center? I've not heard that, I'd really like to know what's happening, and what's going to be lost, and if not lost, how is it going to be substituted or replaced with that relationship? As far as the technology goes, we heard some discussions last night about what this person would do. I understand the staff development for our staff, that certainly is a critical component of it, but I'd like to see how that staff development is going to be addressed and implemented, and also the technology technician, what is this person specifically going to do with our technology in our district when we are now moving in that direction, but I have not seen a comprehensive plan? The other one is the middle school and high school activities. We heard some discussion last night that they could possibly go into intermurals at the middle school, or there could be some involvement with community education, but those were just kind of discussions, and I have not seen any comprehensive plan to address that. So, I would really like to see, I'd like to have more discussion about that, and I also, again, appreciate the input that the community has given regarding these two areas. And going back to the ad hoc committee, I don't know where these two items fell in that discussion as well, and I think we have to honor what those individuals are input as well. So, I'd like to table these two items, recommend we table these two items until our next board meeting. They do not have personnel ramifications such as the other two have, but I would like to have more discussion about this and more in-depth planning about what does it mean if we don't have middle school activities? How is that going to be addressed in an intermurals? And I agree with you, Mr. Casper, intermurals may not be the best way to approach what we want to do, but I would like to see more comprehensive plan. And then again, about Riverbend Nature Center, what are those learner outcomes that are not going to be there? And if they are going to be there, how are they going to be addressed in the curriculum? And I have not had a chance to hear that at this particular time.
I'm gonna ask our superintendent to first help us out a little bit on what the consequences of tabling that discussion to a later date might be. Item, in terms of trying to plan for some of these things, it's a little different than some of the teachers where some deadlines are a little more pressing, but I want to get a sense of that before we make a decision on whether or not to table.
The biggest consequence, of course, is by statute, we have to have a budget passed by June 30th. So, you've got that timeline to deal with. You could put it in the, boy, it's gonna be-
Add it anytime.
They, would we have to have a special session for that, or would we be able to do it? We could come up with a budget in June 30th and then approve it in July, then we just make the adjustment on the budget. So, that, that I don't think is an issue. So, I think we're okay with that.
There are no personnel ramifications for these two items?
Scheduling is good, no, it would be, I mean, Riverbend Nature Center, if that was, I mean, the longer we put that off, the less time, if it is cut, the staff have time to plan for that whole thing. But still, I think if you make that decision at the June board meeting, I would recommend then, if we're gonna do something like this, is to really move that work session to the 17th, because we're gonna have to need more than two days to prepare for this too. But I think we can get it done by the end of June.
Question, I believe that what you were saying is that we don't have some of the personnel timeline issues that we have with licensed staff and that sort of thing.
That's correct.
But I would like to ask Mr. Hubert whether or not obtaining coaches and directors for those activities would be affected by a delay?
It's a good question.
Every year, as far as middle school activities, it is a challenge to get coaches. Some of our coaches hang on for many years and work with our kids for many years, but there are programs that we do struggle to find coaches. So, every year, we're kind of up against the wall when we start middle school seasons, and so, this would just add a little bit more to that as far as tabling it and waiting for it. So, I know that right now, for instance, middle school football, if we were to have that back in place, normally, we have six coaches. Like, I don't know if we've got more than one returning at this time. So, you know, the sooner we can know, the sooner we can get started trying to fill those positions.
Thank you.
You know, and I guess if we're, if we're looking at June 17th, we're not even a month away from that discussion. So, I appreciate what Mr. Hubert is saying, but I, again, the ramifications of doing it tonight without full knowledge of what it means, I think, is a significant issue.
Yeah, I think if the ramification is waiting two weeks to, two-week delay in trying to find coaches, I'd have to ask for that.
Well, it gives us time to research a little bit more in-depth some of these decisions that you have to make too.
And narrows the focus of what those decisions are a little bit to make that research a little easier too.
And the, well, if we're gonna do some research, and I know I'm putting a burden on someone, but based on some of our community comments, it would be helpful for me to know what are, what's the participation rates and participation numbers in these different activities?
Good question.
Yeah, we have those readily available. We can get those, we can probably mail those out pretty quickly.
That's a good question. Officially, a motion to table is not debatable, so I have ruled that you've not actually made such a motion yet. Because I wanted to have a discussion.
Without reframing to a motion.
So, are we, are we ready for a motion? Because once the motion is made, this is a non-debatable item to table something. We, and the motion maker needs to set a date for tabling it, so.
I have a question. I like his idea, but why wasn't the start of when the majority of the board voted make the cuts?
I'm not sure what the question is.
To study the value of middle school sports or high school or activities, I should say. Why wasn't that studied way back, what, September, August, September? Now, we're studying it, should we have known it?
Well, I think, well, yeah, I guess I would say it was an entirely different situation with a much larger set of, much larger requirement for cuts at that point. So, it was not on a borderline part of discussion, so I think the board didn't focus in on it. I mean, none of us, I think, asked for it, including you, Mr. Olson, so I think we're asking for it now, and rather than lament that we maybe didn't ask for it earlier when it was a very different type of discussion, I'd say asking for it now is a reasonable thing.
And just another clarification, when we brought that forward, we were given direction by the board to come up with a certain dollar amount for extracurricular activities, and I asked Mr. Hubert to do that, and he came up with his suggestions, and that was what was approved by the board.
One other comment, and if we're, it appears that we may be delaying the decision on this. Additional information that would be helpful to me is, part of our discussion last night was comparing Faribault Schools to some of our Big Nine colleagues. I served on a North Central Evaluation Committee a number of years ago in the area of student activities, and it was profoundly enlightening to me at that time to see the number of activities at a couple of school districts that I was part of the evaluation team for in comparison to Faribault. And Faribault did not come off well in terms of numbers of activities. And so, is there any information out there as to how Faribault, the number of activities that we have been offering, and hopefully would, my hope is that we would continue to offer, compares to other schools in our conference, other similar schools? Now, again, I recognize I'm asking for some research, but maybe Ken, maybe you have access to some of that in terms of, we did it on the basis of a student handbook. Went to a school, looked at their junior high student handbook, they listed student activities on one page. We went to the Faribault handbook, it listed student activities on one page, and there was a drastic difference.
And I, you just tell me when you want it together, and I'll, I can get that information, comparing Big Nine schools, comparing Section 1AA, however you want that, seven through 12, just athletic activities, other activities, I can put together what you need.
It would be helpful to me in trying to, you know, wrap my head around the situation and perhaps construct arguments from my own position to have that kind of information available before we make this.
Mr. Chair, I mean, if you can just send me that question, I can get it right to Ken. So, any questions that you have about the extracurricular, if you have specific questions, fly them my way, and then I'll put Ken on it and he'll do it. You know, there's one thing, it's changed a little bit, middle school athletics probably from even ten years ago. For example, in our conference for basketball, for boys' basketball and girls' basketball, first of all, Farmington just dropped their middle school basketball program, and they're doing it community-based. There's only three competitive teams that we compete against in basketball right now in the middle school. And four, I'm not sure which one it is, if it's girls or boys, but one's three, one's four. So, some of those dynamics have even changed too.
And as I say, I have some experience from the past, but I have no idea what the current situation is.
So, we'll bring all that research up too, but if you have specific questions, fly them my way, and we'd be more than happy to look it up.
Yeah, I'm happy to entertain any of those questions at this moment, Todd, but you know, questions don't end the way this meeting does, so please continue to forward.
I just want to clarify that my suggestion that we table this is not to put undue burdens on our administrators. I know that the end of the year is a very busy time of the year for all of you, and I respect that, nor is it a stall tactic to make a decision. Nor is it a stall tactic to make a decision. I really do not feel I'm ready to make a decision about these two positions without a little more information. And I appreciate where you're coming from, Mr. Casper, about asking the participation. I think that's a critical issue.
I too am not happy about putting a burden on anyone at a very busy time of year, but if we're going to make the best decision possible, we have to have the best information possible.
Some of these programs, there was fundraising, like was it the boys' girls' tennis? What's the status? And also, the automotive program, where's that?
That's a, I'm glad you brought that up. I had missed that piece of it. We need some direction from the school board with the native program because of the fundraising. And it'd probably be good to have it in the form of a motion to decide if the school is going to fund that program or if we're gonna use the pledges that the group who received the pledges from the community got for the native program. So I'm glad you brought that up. We do need some direction on that piece.
Okay, I'm gonna back up before we do that, because I guess my assumption was, and we voted on item A, was that that was being added to the budget so that that was the school that's paying for it, so.
And if that's a guidance, I'm very comfortable with that.
So as long as you're comfortable with that setting that issue for you, then we'll leave it there. And I guess in towards the other end, I would add that to the list of questions sort of along the lines of if there's going to be some other ways of putting these programs in place through community ed or other things in terms of fundraising and other things. All of those, I think, fall under the heading of what kind of support are these things here, are there for those things? Should the board allocate funds other places? I think, is a good question. I'm ready for the motion.
I move we table items.
Five C and D.
Five C and D with a bring back discussion at the June tenth work session. The seventeenth, I'm sorry, the seventeenth work session with action at the board meeting.
A motion to table is non-debatable. Is there a second to that motion?
I have to correct him because I gave him the date, because we haven't decided to move our work session, so it's gotta be the tenth.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm okay saying the next work session is okay as the next date, it's gotta be specific enough. Is there a second for the motion?
Second.
It's a non-debatable motion, so Mr. Clerk, if you would please do a roll call.
Mr. Casper?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Malathur?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
Aye. Jerry Robichaud, aye. Mr. Engelbreit?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Thank you all very much for your work on that this evening. So this really concludes for the evening, the decisions on what has been removed from the cut list and what has not. There's a few things left to be decided, but I want to put that in perspective. I think I'm speaking on behalf of the board when I say I'm very glad that we're able to add back. The funding situation has changed from what we expected it to be a year ago. And I'm very glad that we can add back the things that we are doing. They are critical and important to so many students in the district, and disappointed that we are not going to be able to add back all the things that we would like to. I think we won't find any disagreement on that from the board. We have some odds and ends to tidy up in light of the decisions we've just made related to items six and seven. So item six on the agenda is to consider approval of resolution thirteen oh six, rescinding the termination status for the list of probationary staff for fiscal year thirteen fourteen. And Todd, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is entirely related to the motion that we just took to add these positions back into the district, and so we can rescind some of the termination notices we had previously set up.
That's exactly right.
Okay, so this is really just formalizing the vote we took a little early. Any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second to approve. Any discussion on this item?
Do we know if any of these teachers have moved on to the districts, you know, if they?
I don't know about.
I will look and see. I don't know.
They're gonna think they're gonna lose their job.
I mean, if it's important, I can look through it right now, but if you want me to, again, I can fly an email later on and let you know, that's fine too.
Just a general question.
Either way, so I will tell you that there are some teachers that have let the district and moved on and got a job somewhere. I'd have to go back and tell you exactly who they are.
All right, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Mr. Casper?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Malathur?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Engelbreit?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
All right, next on the agenda is item seven, consider the approval of resolution thirteen oh seven, rescinding the unrequested leave of absence status for the list of non-probationary staff for fiscal year thirteen fourteen. This is exactly like the previous motion in its nature, except that it addresses the non-probationary staff versus the probationary staff. For those who aren't familiar with the terminology, that means this one addresses tenured staff who have been with the district for a while versus new staff who are treated under a different set of rules. So I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Same question.
Same question?
Same question.
I don't think any of these folks have moved on to another district.
The smaller list, a little easier to know.
I know these, in fact, I'm pretty sure they have not. Now, they could have taken a job tonight, but I don't, okay?
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Mr. Casper?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Malathur?
Aye.
Mr. Olson?
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Engelbreit?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. Last item on the agenda before we adjourn is to consider approval to change the date of the June work session from June tenth to June seventeenth. Superintendent Sesker asked to have this put on the agenda just within this last week here as they're contemplating all the things that we want to have put together for that June work session. And now we've added a few other items that they're feeling that they get a full and complete budget together that that extra week would help them greatly. So they are requesting this. This is a change of date, and it had consequences, so I want to have a sense of how that impacts. I know Deb has already expressed that this might mean that she can't make the, or does mean that she can't make the meeting. I don't know about for Howard on that item, so we put it to the board to ask whether or not that can work for people, if we can make that work and try to give the administration an extra week to give us the best information possible. And so, hearing no further comments on that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change of the work session date.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a date for the change of date for the June work session from June tenth to June seventeenth. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion carries. This brings us to the last item, a motion to adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.